We are going to call the morning workshop of the Clicktack County Board of County Commissioners to order, and we will begin with our legislative update from Potts and Associates. Zach?
Well, good morning. How are we doing?
Good morning. We're doing good until probably we get done with this conversation.
Well, you know, I mean, it's not all bad. Don't put that on me just yet. So we'll get there. All right, let me, let me walk through some of this stuff. We had a kind of an interesting situation at the, we do every Friday, there's an agricultural lobby meeting where all the agricultural lobbyists show up and kind of share information and talk about strategy and everything we're doing. And this includes everybody from literally like the Christmas tree growers to the wheat growers to the cattlemen. I mean, it's everybody. Timber guys, all of it. So I mean, it really is kind of everybody. And Representative Chapman came to the meeting and he said, wow, you know, I'm really surprised that none of you are talking about these two bills. And specifically they're 5383, which is pedestrians moving along roadways and 1674, which is basically higher penalties for people driving pickups and specific SUVs who strike a pedestrian. I will throw into that mix, there's another interesting one out here. I gotta pull it up. It's 1582, which prohibits drivers from making a right turn within proximity of certain facilities. So it's like a thousand feet from schools and government buildings and things like that, where now you can't make a right turn on red is what they're talking about. All three of these bills are really interesting. They kind of conflict. At the same time, we're telling pedestrians that they can walk across the street anywhere they want. We're saying, okay, within a certain area, you can't turn right on red. And then also if you're driving a pickup and you hit somebody, you hit a pedestrian, your penalties increase. They all kind of butt heads and part of the argument here is it's already illegal to run people over. And I don't think there's anybody in our state that actively goes out, tries to hit people. But why, the question is, why allow pedestrians to cross anywhere where people aren't expecting it? And then, you know, let's just say it happens to be a pickup. Then they get penalized more, you know, that's on top of whatever other potential charges they could see for, you know, vehicular assault, manslaughter, all that stuff. So these bills don't really make sense, but they are still pushing them. So it's something that we probably want to take a little bit, make, you know, a little bit of attention to. We are in cutoff week, so Friday's the last day to get bills out of their policy committee of origin. We do have one more week on top of that for fiscal committees. That includes transportation. So because these bills are all going to be in transportation, they do have another week, something to look at. Not particularly, you know, onerous for us. It's just you have a lot of people in your constituency that drive pickups and probably wouldn't appreciate how they're approaching these bills. So wanted to bring those to your attention. The other one that's working really well right now that is a good effort is 5303. And this is relating to the Public Works Assistance revolving account. They want to reestablish it because they know that it's a really good account. They know that it really helps us on the local level, get public works done, low interest loans, pay it back, it grows, it grows. And then the legislature sees this pot of money and wants to steal it. And in fact, they end up stealing it pretty much every time. So the bill does acknowledge, or at least the report committee acknowledges that in order to make this an account that can't be swept into the general fund or operating budget or something like that, has to be a constitutional amendment. We have tried that almost every year for a decade to no avail. However, it sounds like they're starting to acknowledge that this is actually a really good tool for the counties to use. And maybe next year, there might be some, you know, gumption to put a constitutional amendment together. I don't know. We'll talk about running it. But this one brings back the, the Public Works Assistance Fund. I am moderately proficient on talking about this, but if you have any specific questions, I recommend you contact Commissioner Scott Hutzel up in Lincoln County or down in Lincoln County, over in Lincoln County, wherever direction it is. He sat on the Public Works Board and is very, very well versed on this stuff and can tell you all the ins and outs of it. Really good resource there for us. Kind of going through my list here, there is a very onerous bill. This is the governor slash Attorney General's response to the Washington State Sheriff's Association coming out opposed to the proposed governor's firearms bills. And basically this is House Bill 1445. And what this bill does is this one would allow the state to invoke Department of Justice investigations upon the commissioners or your sheriff or anybody at the local level who might make the decision, an elected official who would make the decision that, you know, some policy implemented by the state or otherwise was unconstitutional and therefore decided not to enforce it. This would make it so they could be investigated and I mean, beyond the fact that this is kind of a strong arm way to get local sheriffs to adopt these policies on firearms that the governor is pushing. It would charge the county or the city, it charged the local jurisdiction. You would be financially responsible for that investigation. So it's really a nasty, nasty bill. There is a hearing on Thursday at 4:00 PM in House Appropriations. I definitely suggest you look at that and, you know, maybe consider letting your other elected officials know that that bill is being heard this Thursday. Let's see, the other one we've got, there's another interesting one. It's 5627, sponsored by Senator Hunt. And this one's talking about the salaries for county commissioners and council members. It's a little bit confusing on this one. I know that we've got some commissioners going to, or some commissions, Spokane County going to a five commissioner board. And that's really where this comes from. But what it looks at is it require, would require a basically a commission you put together of citizens. And it stipulates how you have to bring those citizens in. And you'd have to pay them and they have to be from each district if you want to increase or decrease the county commissioner salaries. I'm not by any means saying that this shouldn't be a public process. However, the concerns with this from the local level that we have is, and I'm sure you guys have this issue as well, filling out civilian boards is extremely difficult and just getting people to volunteer and show up. And then again, another budget item to pay for that. You know, I mean, equalization boards are usually a really, really good example. I mean, you can't hardly get anybody to sit on them. So finding three more people from the public who want to volunteer and come spend their time to talk about commissioner salaries could be difficult. So this one is just, it is more procedurally difficult. We've got some meetings set up with Senator Hunt, see what we can do about that one. Maybe it's, maybe it's a voluntary thing. I don't know. We'll, we'll follow that one a little ways. And I don't know if it'll actually move or not. Right now it is scheduled for executive session in local government at 10:30 on Thursday. Again, we're in, coming up on the first cutoff. Some of these things are gonna move kind of, especially with a single sponsor like this, are gonna move through cutoff and then just kind of fade away. Some of them, you know, will move through cutoff and get, get legs. This one could just fade away. We're gonna try and get some information on that here coming into the second half of the week. So let's see, with that, the other one, oh, last one that I wanted to talk about was the riparian areas. There was a bill 1215. It was mandatory. It would require expenditures in riparian areas along river streams, things like that. It was a governor asked bill. And it was, it was really kind of onerous. It really didn't take into consideration other programs that are in place, whether it be GMA, voluntary stewardship, the salmon recovery efforts, things like that. And so what they did is they came together, the stakeholders, and this is a bipartisan, both houses, everybody participated, the tribes participated, agriculture came in. The counties had at least a voice in it. And they came up with, basically they're gonna do a substitute to the bill. The governor's office saw it, said, no, we're not gonna support that. Do not put that on our bill. So they did a whole new bill. They scrapped 1215 and the new bill is House Bill 1720. This one has sponsors from both sides of the aisle. The first one's a Democrat, Republican, Democrat, Republican, Republican, you know. And it just, it goes down the line and it's a very good bill. It's voluntary. One of the things that came out of the conversations with this is the tribes were very pleased to see the efforts and the work that the counties have done on the local level here with the riparian areas. Because that was the, the big comment said, look, we've done a, under VSP, under growth management, depending on, you know, planning or not. We've done a lot of work and we know where these dollars need to go in the riparian areas. We know what needs to happen. Don't put this bill, the old 1215 in place and make us put money where we don't need it or where it's not gonna have a big impact. And so this was kind of a really good case to showcase up to the state level, whether it be the governor's office, the ecology, the tribes, what we've done kind of as a group on the local level here. And it was kind of, I guess, kind of surprising. I guess I could say surprising that the governor's office pulled their support from this negotiated bill, but nonetheless they did. This one's gonna move 1215, isn't the governor's office is unhappy. So that kind of, let me make sure, I want to make sure that I don't have anything else on here. There's a couple other alarming bills that like one, House Bill 1333. This one would be establishing the Domestic Violent Extremism Commission. I've got a lot of comments on this one. It is in appropriations right now, so they have another week to look at this bill. This would fall under like the red flag laws and, and things like that, that have been constitutionally challenged legally on a state and federal level, kind of across the country. There's a lot of concern about this bill, especially from the local level, you know, from the rural areas. And all I can say is, is there is quite a bit of push behind it. There's quite a few sponsors. But if it does pass, there's legal documents ready to be filed at the court that would at least stop it for now and then bring it into legal question. The other one that is, has been brought up that people are going, oh, this could be a bad idea. It's 5509, creating the Washington State Public Infrastructure Bank. Keeping my personal opinion out of it, I have not heard any auditors or county commissioners at this point that are thinking this is a good idea. Creating the, the arguments I hear is creating another layer of bureaucracy. It's putting more burden on the cash flow and how things go. It's just one more stop and more expense that's not needed. It has seen executive session twice. And the Senate Committee on Business, Financial Services and Gaming and Tribal, or Gaming and Trade, long committee name, but it's gone to executive session twice and they haven't been able to get it out. So I don't know that this one's gonna move. It's kind of, it could be kind of a, hey, we tried, but we should watch it. So with that, that kind of the, the end of the information I have to share with you guys and kind of bring your attention to some stuff. Let me know if you want to comment on any of this stuff and, and I would definitely recommend, you know, sharing some of it with your other elected officials. And are there any questions you guys have for me? Anything that's come up? Anything you want to look at while we're here?
Do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Do you have an update on 1756? That's the supporting clean energy through tax changes. Are you hearing if that's gonna make any headway?
That one right now, it is in finance. They've heard it. They haven't put toward, any effort towards an executive session. It would be nice. I think, but I don't think there's a lot of impetus behind it. I think the fiscal notes are a little high for them. If they pass this bill out of the fiscal committees, they have till next Friday, not this coming Friday to do that. I think there's gonna be a big budget conversation as we come into the end of session. So my answer right now is I don't know, but this one has a long ways to go before they decide to pass it.
Okay.
So not a, not a terrible report, right? I hope.
Oh, there's some scary bills in here.
There are, you know, I mean, it, it's kind of like being a county commissioner. And for everybody who's listening, definitely tell your commissioners that they do a good job when you like what they do, because nobody ever tells you guys that you do a good job. You always get complaints, not compliments. So.
We didn't notice.
Yeah, you didn't notice.
Are you thinking 5383 and 1674, do you think they're gonna get much in terms of legs against it for?
You know, I think that, I don't know that answer. To be honest with you, they literally snuck in under everybody's radar. Just the title of the bills and, and how they came in, we're kind of looking at it, no joke. Everybody in the agricultural meeting, in the egg lobby meeting, and this is pretty diverse cross section. None of us just represent agriculture. Nobody caught it. And so I think now that people are paying attention, there's gonna be a lot of opposition at very least to 1674. That's the increased penalties for pickups. At very least, I think we'll have a lot of opposition from that. And I can't imagine the sheriffs and police coming out and saying, oh yeah, we're totally cool with jaywalking now. It seems to me that that, and I'm not, you know, I'm not a statistician or somebody doing these surveys and looking at the numbers, but I can't imagine that just people walking willy nilly across the road would decrease impacts from cars. So I don't know that answer, but I can tell you there is definitely going to be a lot more comment on these things if they pass out of committee here before this cutoff, between now and the next cutoff. So that'd be the opposite house of origin or opposite house cutoff. There's definitely gonna be some comment.
Okay. And the other one I just love a little more discussion is House Bill 1445. Seems like that one would have probably an impact on Clicktack County. And what, so they put in a substitute. Do you know what the changes were?
On the substitute bill, let's see, they added a new section. I don't know specifically what the changes are on this. They, they haven't put out their analysis. I can look into that though. Yeah, I'll have to look into exactly what the changes were on the substitute bill. But it's been referred to appropriations. They're hearing it at 4:00 PM here on Thursday. So it's definitely something we're gonna want to look at. Do you the first substitute? I'll have to look into what the substitute said and what the substantive changes were on that.
Okay. I'll do some more research on 1445. Yeah, and I'm, and watch the videos, but thanks for bringing that one. I hadn't even come across that one before.
Yep, of course. And, and I think, you know, this is one that realistically, there's a lot of these bills coming out like that right now that are pretty nebulous or vague. You know, it's at the discretion of the Attorney General or, you know, to determine whether this is something that they want to challenge or something that they want to bring charges on or investigate. It's just even lacking substance. So there's definitely some questions there.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you. That was good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
All right. Thank you guys very much. And as always, call or email if you ever need anything and I'll be available.
All right. Have a great day.
Thanks.
Bye.
Mr. Chairman, there will not be a finance county update. Evidently it was canceled.
Okay. All right. Well, we've got about 10 minutes and I'm gonna sit here and look at this bill unless our HR director has something in the penalty box. Okay. Well, why don't we, if we're just gonna sit here, why don't we just turn the recording off? So. All right. Next up, we have our department update from our acting interim Public Works Director Jeff Hunter and acting interim county engineer Seth Skorla.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Hand that out, please.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a few things on your consent agenda. The first one is a notice for the public hearing on a franchise agreement with Bluebird Solar Power LLC. I don't want to get too far into the weeds because then we might get irritated because there is a public hearing, so I have to be careful what I discuss. I did give you a copy of the RCW because there seems to be some misunderstanding of what a franchise agreement truly is. Franchise agreement gives the county the ability to not put the taxpayers at risk. Because what it is, the franchise agreement tells whoever holds the utility that if the county needs to do roadwork, they're at cost to move their utility, not the county. That's why franchise agreements are, have been stated. They're, they fall under RCW 8032. That's what regulates them. I gave you a copy, Seth gave you a copy of the RCW, just in case it comes up. It's something we do with all utility companies. And with solar being a utility company, they're just, they're just another utility company as far as we're concerned. We're protecting the people of the county by moving forward with the franchise agreement. And I'll save the rest for the hearing. Okay, we also have a termination agreement to, for stock, purchasing stockpile rock. We used to have a quarry site that McBride Ranches owned the property. We had a quarry there. We've closed the quarry down and we're gonna release our lease from the quarry. So we have, no longer have any legal rights to mine there. We don't need the rock. We mined it the last time, and I believe 96, I think it was.
We don't have any rock left over there?
No, it's all been cleaned. It's been reclaimed and we're gonna release the land back to McBride's. We have a couple of local agency agreements with, they're supplements with GN Northern for our geotechnical engineering and with Sargent Engineers. They're both to extend the completion date through this year because we have ongoing projects with them. And with that, we have no payments. With that, I'll turn it over to Seth for construction.
Construction, the construction group's continuing their visual ratings of pavement as weather permits. They're still in the Glenwood area and then we're moving on to Trout Lake hopefully this week. Contracts and bonds for the annual striping contract were sent to the contractor for execution. On the design end of things, we received proposals last week for our other on-call agreements, environmental survey and real estate. So we'll be completing evaluations and making selections on those for this, this next year or this year, current year. The safety projects, including the bridge painter, are still in Wash Dot's hands, waiting approval to go to add and, and the review of our plans and specs. Bidding documentation will be sent out tomorrow for our annual road oil bid. And bids will be opened on March 7th for that project.
Okay, on the maintenance side, east side crews are brushing, grading and spot grappling. That's kind of what we do this time of the year if we're not plowing snow. We prefer to do that. It's actually gets something and it doesn't, it's a little bit more affordable. White Salmon crew, we're brushing, ditching, pothole repairing, and we're working on a slide on Centerville Highway. If you know where the previous slide was, this one's about 500 feet or so up the hill from that. It's on the west side behind the, there's guard rail on the west side. There's a small piece of guard rail on the west side of Centerville Highway. It's right there. We're gonna, we're gonna put in some gabion baskets to prevent that from, to stabilize that area. That'll be, that'll happen Wednesday and Thursday. Upcoming facilities projects, the general contractor is finally on site this week and they're working on punch list items. So we're, we'll be getting through this. HVAC, we still need that one estimate. We're pushing on them to get that. Courthouse HVAC Systems and the Pioneer HVAC System. This is the project for this, scheduled for this year. We still have the one that was done last year that we're waiting for the weather to warm up a little in the spring. We'll actually put those units on, but this is for, these are for the this year's projects. The small works contracts went out to bid and they're scheduled for our bid opening in March. Jail roof replacement, we're working on the design. We talked about that earlier. Same way with superior courtroom remodel. Fairgrounds waterline, we're still scheduled to start construction February 28th. And Juvenile and Courthouse Break Room is moving forward. We're finishing the floor covering today. Maybe in a couple of weeks I give you the tour of a completed area and we will open it up to staff. Radio site, pre-con was held last week and that, the schedule for them is April, May. Depending upon weather, they will start installing the tower, the contractor will. We're finishing up with the last contract and hope to have that out to bid first part of next week, maybe. It's a small works contract. Other follow-up issues, there's a dryer in health and Pioneer Center that's gone that needs to be replaced now. It's kind of a, or not a commercial, it's a residential dryer. Aaron has the money to replace it. In the past, we haven't replaced it, but I just want to make sure we still stand there. What's the board's feelings on that? In the past, we replaced the bigger units that are built in, the big commercial units. When I say we, I mean Public Works Buildings and Grounds. They can end up on the project lists like the non-capital. This one wouldn't be traditionally unless you would prefer we do that. If not, I will just tell Aaron that to move forward.
What do they use the dryer for?
I think they clean, you know, dry linens and I'm not really sure what they do. Yeah, it's their stuff basically. But typically we don't buy those because they're smaller. It's like we don't buy microwaves and things like that.
I'm good if they have the budget.
Okay, thank you. And I wanted to give you an update. The tour went well. David McNeil reached out to me and he wants another, well, he didn't really want a tour. He wanted to just go and run Brandon Walters down when he could talk to him. I said, yeah, we can't do that. First of all, it's not our employee. Second of all, he could schedule time. I talked to Brandon. Brandon was gonna give me some dates. He could schedule time to ask more questions. This is, if this is fine with you guys, this is what I want to tell him. That he could schedule time to talk to him. Brandon's fine with that, but I don't want to just let him go in and have free run. I mean, PUD doesn't want that either. The liability gets pretty, for us can get pretty, and it is our insurance. So I don't want him down there unless Brandon's available and Brandon can actually take it. Because he says he has more questions. If that's okay with you guys, that's how we'll address it.
As long as there's someone there with him.
Yeah, Brandon would be that he would, he would schedule times Brandon will tell him. He'll work through us and tell us the times and I'll relay those to David. And he can meet with Brandon only on these times. David preferred just when he has a chance to go down there. And I'm like, yeah, no, I don't want to do that.
Sounds good.
Okay. And you went on the tour?
Yes, I did. Yeah, I think it was good.
It was.
I think it was a big eye opener to actually be on the ground for the participants.
And they got to see what the clarifier looked like.
How many people went?
Nine?
Something like that, yeah.
Good assortment.
It was a good assortment. So they got to know what the parts are and stuff and the lifespan on some of the things. I think they're starting to get a handle on what they could, what everybody's up against.
Right. Okay.
I think that's it for our list.
I wanted to tell you, thank you for the Dallasport Community Center. They're very, very proud of their new bathrooms and they had to show me last time I was down there. And they're very nice. You wouldn't know they're the same bathrooms.
Thank you.
It's great. Did a good job.
Good. I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. If you have any questions on the other thing.
Next up, we have our emergency management director, Jeff King. Next up, we have our emergency management director, Jeff King. He's going to email you this word. Whenever you're ready, sir. Do you have new handouts or?
No. No, there's minimal updates, so I didn't print more. Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry if I sound a little hoarse. Been fighting illness for the last two weeks and trying to catch up from being gone. So I'll start out this morning, nothing on the consent agenda from my department today. And the, I'm very pleased to report that the radio system is operating normally at this time. We're continuing to follow up on some things, but the ODU replacement at Stacker Butte for the Juniper Microwave Link was completed successfully. And that redundant microwave loop is back online. So our system is fully operational and backed up as it should be. That part is now in to see if it can be repaired and if not, purchase a new one so that we have that backup part in inventory in case or when this happens again. Because without that backup, we would have been in a very vulnerable position. I'm also considering, even if that part can't be repaired, we will be replacing it and maybe purchasing a second one. So that like right now, if another one goes down, we don't have a backup in inventory to replace it. So we were somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 days without that redundancy. So that's a little too long for comfort if we would have lost that second piece of the link. The west side of the county's radio system would have gone offline. So don't want to take any unnecessary risks if the cost to have that backup in inventory is not excessive. I'll make that decision. The Kaysa Ridge site microwave issue that we've discussed a few times, I've updated you on. I've received the quote while I was out. I haven't got a chance to review it completely yet. We're, it's not going to be an easy of a permanent solution as I had thought originally. So reviewing that quote to see how I want to proceed, making that link permanent. We need to do that in some fashion. How we do it and how much it costs is what I'll be looking into. Continuing to work with Yakima County on the surplus of radio equipment from them to us at little to no cost. That is for microwave equipment as well as pager, H-channel radio equipment so that we can have that also in our spares inventory and for build out of future sites if needed. And the flat top security fence and the exterior wall damage, still looking into that. It's been on hold for a little while. We can't do anything there at this time of year, but researching all the options there and looking into both tier one and tier three annual reports from last year on other issues that need to be addressed mainly with our facilities, the radio equipment itself continues to operate, is being maintained. On the facility side, I'm getting a little bit behind on trying to maintain those buildings and fences and all those things. So then I'll probably be reaching out to Public Works more and more to figure out how to make those facilities viable long-term in the future as they continue to age. Radio site lease agreements in process. I've initiated contact with the Juniper Point landowners, the NC Smelter Company. If you remember correctly, last time they asked us, they would only agree to a two-year land lease agreement instead of something longer. Or even I ventured into the question about purchasing the property and so on or a long-term lease. They wanted only two years because of the pump storage project and the unknowns that were related to where that project was going and the sale of that land and so on. So we'll see where those negotiations go for renewal, but we really have no other options. That site is a vital hub for our system for the central and east end of the county. So be looking for their reply and we'll assume that your direction is still to negotiate for the longest term lease or a land purchase if available. And we're not the only public safety radio sites at that location. Tribal Fisheries, law enforcement and, what do they call themselves? Frontier Communications out of Oregon are also located there as well as others. And that, those are vital sites for all of us. Frontier Dispatch Communications serves five counties in central and eastern Oregon and three tribes. So they're not going to be willing to go somewhere else either. And then the other agreements and the standardization of our sublease and co-location agreements projects are still in process. The Public Safety Radio Project continues, as you heard from Public Works, continuing to work with the Public Works and the consultant and our tier one support provider to make sure that we get everything done appropriately and don't end up with any of the issues we did in the first two phases of the radio project that we have to deal with on an ongoing basis. Any questions about the radio system or project?
I'm good.
Excellent. And I'll turn it over to Phil, Chief of Operations.
Good morning.
Talk about 911 dispatch.
So for our updates, we have really good updates. I'm pleased to share compared to last year where we were. We've hired two communications officers since our last board update and they are currently in classroom training. This is their second week, so we're optimistic so far. We have one position that will be, I think it's already been posted, I haven't seen all my emails, but one position is still posted. And we're a little bit limited in how many training officers we have to how many people we can get going in the training. So we're working on that process. So again, our momentum, our morale in the department is pretty good. Again, coming out of last year and the struggles we have, we've had, we started our training process for our regular communications officers. They have to meet a regular accreditation, continuing education hours, so getting back on that. We're also with our two lead dispatchers and several new dispatchers that are very high We're going through an implementation process where a lot of the duties that defaulted to me are getting spread around. We've adopted the idea that Jeff doesn't like to hear this, but it's trained my replacement. Not that I'm planning on leaving, but the best idea is to train everybody else to do what I do so that there's a continuation of work whether I'm sick or not or on vacation or, you know, whatever the case is. So a lot of those duties, we're teaching the communications officer, I'm teaching the leads on different things that they can take care of, which in turn gives me less callouts and less, you know, things to come up on the weekend that I have to deal with because they're able to deal with themselves.
As much cross-training as is practical.
Yeah, so, and that is also helping with morale because they're entrusted with more, you know, and it goes hand in hand. And they're very capable of handling all these things. So things are shaping up, shaping up pretty good as well as we've had a lot of renovation things going on in dispatch. We are, we're in the process, I'll skip down to the bottom of the list there, still working with county IT and buildings and grounds for the dispatch console monitor project update. We do have two consoles that are upgraded, new structures. So now we're able to have 10 monitors as opposed to five. It's a lot, but when you're doing the work that the dispatchers do, they need more tools to do the job they do. So that this is all helping out with that. And seeing those changes helps. We're still working on the texting 911 that's been on hold for a little bit and the CAD RMS system with the sheriff's office is still ongoing as well, trying to integrate that. But overall, I think it's, it's kind of coming together after a while where, like I mentioned last year, we had some staffing issues, a lot of things went on hold, we're starting to pick up and go. And I'll let, if you have any questions, otherwise I'll give it back to Jeff.
Good, sounds like you're moving forward.
Nice to hear positive things, haven't I?
Yeah.
Yes. As far as user agreements, we have now received, it says it's at still, the Goldendale City Agreement's still at the city for signatures. We did just receive that since I submitted this last Thursday. So that agreement has been fully executed and returned to us. We're still waiting on the White Salmon Agreement and then Radio Service Solutions Support Agreement is still out. And moving on to emergency management program activities, continuing to work on the county outdoor burn ban code. Have sent emails, got some feedback. Like I said, I had over 600 emails when I got back from vacation and was back one day and out all of last week otherwise. So I haven't seen all of those emails to know if the Fire Chiefs Association has formed a committee and reached out to me to discuss their feedback yet, but I haven't, nothing that I'm aware of. Phil and Frank did attend CAFIA meeting. They have their meetings every other month. There was one when I was gone, the end of January, and it was discussed there. So hopefully there will be some engagement from CAFIA coming soon if it's not already in my inbox. And I'll get back to you on all that. But as far as I'm concerned, we're on track to make sure that that update is in place and that code is approved by the board before we institute the first burn ban of this season. Training and exercises are on track. Doing a little more emphasis on recruiting volunteers for DEM. We burnt a lot of those folks out during the COVID event and they've all taken a break. Some of them are coming back, others have decided to step away completely. Have had success in recruiting volunteers for the unmanned aerial systems team to support all hazards events in the county. And that's, you know, a combination of firefighters, DEM volunteers and search and rescue volunteers that all are on that team and the ongoing training continues. We haven't made that team fully operational and deployable yet, trying to get through the basic training and certifications for those folks to be operational in the field. As far as EM program grants, you can read all of that. It's extensive, so I won't go through it point by point. If you have any questions, you know, let me know. Lots of activities and projects under each one of those grants. We did just receive the 22 EMPG grant application workbook this last week with a four-week turnaround time. So my staff will be working to get that submitted to the state and go through the process. So that grant will renew July 1st. That's an annual grant from FEMA through the state. And the emergency notification system, there have been some collaboration with a group that was formed during COVID in the gorge. And Phil actually knows the most about this. He's been working on it quite a bit. He was the liaison for the EOC during COVID and that's where, like I said, this sprung up from. But Frank's found it useful also to help with that, getting people signed up for the emergency notification system as well. Do you have anything to add on that?
Well, I just had the collaboration has been with several people. It includes, or several groups includes The Next Door, which is, I believe, a nonprofit there out of Wasco County, Department of Health in Washington, no, Oregon, and several health organizations in Wasco Sherman and Hood River areas. And interestingly enough, as mentioned, as it mentions here, The Next Door has created a hotline to assist individuals and the vulnerable populations that may have difficulty signing up online or on the phone. So even though they're working through this, through a grant process, through a grant that they received in Oregon, part of their emphasis and the group's emphasis has been to include our, the neighboring counties in Washington, which includes us. So there, they added Clickitad County and Skamania to that hotline to assist individuals in signing up for the emergency notification system. We'll continue to collaborate with them. Just wanted to note that it, there is no requirement for them to do this and it's been great for them to include us in that. It's helping us reach those populations that otherwise are hard to reach.
Yes, and I'd also like to announce that the employee of the month for February is Communications Officer Isabella Gutierrez, the newest member of our fully trained communications staff. Any questions?
No, you're doing good.
No questions here? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wow, we are moving along. You guys, have a great day.
Yep, thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners. Public Works forgot to ask for verbal approval to fill a vacant ground operations specialist. One of their staff has taken another job within the county. And so as of yesterday, there's an opening. So it would be a union position, grade 36.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Let me jump in before lunch.
That was easy. Canal is working. Okay. Okay. We're moving.
Okay, we are way ahead of schedule today. Do you have any board pending or anything you'd like to discuss? Any updates from your meetings last week?
I have to think where I was last week. I get lost. I'll let you go first. You did a few more adventures than I did.
Sure. Last week was a very busy week. I spent time down in Salem and we were lobbying or working and educating the legislature on a house bill down there for $125 million for the bridge. And that was in front of the Joint Transportation Committee and that was really well received. All of the committee members are well aware of the bridge and the needs and a lot of them have a lot of history. I was really impressed with the legislature down there, their knowledge of the transportation of the gorge. And then I also went to Olympia and met with legislators all day on the bridge project. And then we attended gorgeous nights, which was really well attended. The room was The room was packed for a while, but that's what happens, I guess, when you give out free food and booze.
Was it all about tourism for our area?
No, no, so there was, there was environmental organizations, there was some of our businesses that are like just mom and pop businesses made the trek all the way up there. Margie's Outdoor Store had a site. Cities were well represented from all, both sides of the river. It was, it was a really well attended event, and I think, you know, the, our legislators were the hosts of it, and they spread out and talked to everyone. And so it was a really positive, positive day.
Good.
I can go look at my calendar on all the other things. Took up most of the week. Did you get a chance to go to the Range Timber Meeting?
I'm going to do that. Was there one here? I signed up for Zoom.
It was Thursday, February 9th, 1 to 3.
No, I did not get to read it that.
All right, I was hoping to hear an update from that. Let's see, what else did I miss?
I, on the 9th, I was City of Golden Dale with Maria Catwell's staff. So we talked about economics and help getting federal help into our local areas. So that was a good meeting.
Any particular projects?
No, they invited a wide range of people, the hospital, the schools. Pump storage was in the second meeting, and that was a good meeting. That's moving forward well. And then other than that, last week I spent several different meetings and times on Dallasport Water District and Dallasport Wastewater Treatment Plant information. Trying to think where else I was. The days go and you, you just run. It's, it's amazing, changing from subject to subject. It's hard to keep up. And I did have my first meeting with City of the Dells. That was interesting and got to meet Matthew.
Great.
Forge a relationship with him, nice guy.
Really, smart.
Yeah, has good plans and works hard.
The other meeting I had last week was with the White Salmon Valley Parks for the pool.
Okay.
And we talked about the, you know, we've got the $50,000 set aside for each Commissioner District. And I talked with the city and the idea was this kind of, we will, we would, we will keep the money in our coffers until they need it and then be like most of our grants reimbursement based when they move to construction.
Okay.
And they seem like they were willing to accept that.
Good.
Of course said, well, what about next year? So we're just gonna need to find a fund to put it in and market.
It has its place right now in the cumulative reserve.
Right.
It's good, and we could, staff can start airing funding assistance agreements if the board would like.
I mean, they're not, it's probably gonna be a while before they can get access to it. So it's gonna be more for the construction side, I think, is what we're hoping for.
Do you anticipate them using it this year? Good to know, thank you.
I think they've, they, I mean, the cost of the pool keep going up. And they're just trying to get every access avenue to money that they can. They've put in forward a legislative request through Chris Corey and Gina and everyone for, you know, trying to get something, some, I think, 3.2 million. And if they could get that, then they could move forward. It's a tough one. Other than that, those were my big updates. Is there anything else you have for the good of the order?
I do not.
All right, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn for lunch. And we can get some of these emails responded to.
I will second that motion.
So.
Oh, I will make a motion to adjourn for lunch.
I will step down and second the motion.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor adjourning for lunch, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Cause it was muted.
Whenever you ladies are ready, all right. Oh, it says record, okay. We are going to call the regular business meeting of the Clickitack County Board of County Commissioners to order. Our first call, let the record show Commissioner Zoller and Anderson. Our present Commissioner Christopher is on county business in Washington DC. First, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Would you like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will step down and second the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 24th, 2023.
I will step down and second that motion as well. All those in favor of approving the January 24th minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next, we are going to move into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. If you would please do your best to be kind, considerate, and concise, that would go over well. We will begin in the room as always, is there anyone who would like to provide a public comment? Please come forward. All right, we will go online. Is there anyone who would like to provide public comment to the Board of County Commissioners? I can't see it when the timer's up. We can't, you can't move it over? Okay. I saw Brian Walsh, did Brian Walsh want to provide public comment?
Not this time.
Okay, okay. If there is anyone who would like to provide public comment, star six to unmute yourself if you're on your phone, turn your video on, raise your hand, jump up and down, get our attention. If not, we will go back to getting some work done. Gabrielle Gilbert.
Hi, thank you for your time. I want to talk about what was spoken last week from Commissioner Christopher concerning public funds, government, and its role in childcare. I want to speak that at this point in Clickitack County, because we are in our childcare desert, public school is de facto the childcare that is reliable. And public school can only go so far when it provides seven hours of care. And then if you have limited spots in aftercare, after-school programming, it will give you another two hours. But the children that are infant to five or six years of age, those before care and those after care, and those families that have schedules that run 10 to 12 hours shifts are up against it when it comes to the lack of childcare. Public schools have been around since the 1700s. And the reality is that the proclamation and the constitution is clear that it is the welfare of the people that matters too. And that government is there to address problems that are presented in communities. And childcare is the economic driver so that the economics of a county are strong and that the social fabric of a county is strong. And my question is, how do I get a commissioner who has sentiments the way he does and who does not show up on a regular basis to the childcare committee? How do I get a new commissioner on that committee? At this point, it's been six months since Commissioner Christopher has shown up to the childcare committee. And I know it's not mandatory by state law, but it is a pressing issue, and it is something that requires someone to show up so that we can have a discussion about what we are going to do to address it in a meaningful way. And I consider his hyperbole and his posturing, the noise that surrounds childcare and how we don't move the marker when we get sucked into that noise. And I'm asking for someone on this, on the board, to actually be a member that shows up to the childcare committee and does it on a regular basis. Thank you for your time. And, and again, Commissioner Christopher has a post-it with 61 kids who are county worker children from infancy to child age, child school age, needing care. Is that posted a reminder of what he's going to do or a reminder of what he's not going to do? And that I would like when he returns from Washington to answer. And yeah, we need someone new on the committee because it matters and childcare is lacking in the gorge. And it requires, it requires attention. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Do we have anyone else who would like to provide public comment in the room? Or online? Star six to raise your hand. Unmute yourself. Turn your video camera on.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes. Please come forward, there's nobody speaking, so don't you mind.
Just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce you to Elena James, she's my new chief deputy. She comes to us from the Mary Hill Winery with a very wide range of experience and contacts that will help us in my quest to modernize and streamline the auditor's office. So Elena, this is Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Zoller. I assume that Commissioner Christopher is still in DC. So I'll have to come back over.
Well, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, pleased to meet you.
Pleasure to meet you.
We are excited to have her.
All right.
Thanks.
Say hi anytime.
Have a great day. Okay, we are still in public comment, if anybody would like to provide public comment, either in the room or online. Get our attention. 2662. Please give us.
Hello, Commissioners. Am I okay to speak?
Yep, we can hear you, please give us your name and location, general location.
My name is Tracy McCune, and I'm in Lisle, Washington. And I have quite a few things I was gonna ask. I have tried for the last three weeks to make an appointment with you Commissioners, but I realized you're busy. But I was gonna go over these things with you personally, but since I haven't been able to, I'll go through them here now. So my first question is, I believe there was something about the burn ban ordinance in this agenda, today's agenda. And you refer to KSIFA, K-C-I-F-A, as who directed the ordinance through a meeting on, in January, at the end of January sometime. So my first question is, who is KSIFA? And can a person get public records from this group? Are the meetings open to the public? And if so, how, how can a person find out about the meetings? Or would the Commissioners be willing to, to put it on their agenda when there's a meeting coming up? And then my second question is, is on the, what does KSIFA do? So what is their job? I, I thought that they were just a, a steering or a committee, but I, I don't know what they are. Anyway, my second question is on the radio system use and 911 dispatch service agreements that went out from the, the, well, Jeff King with Emergency Management to all the different fire districts. Are they, are those approved by the board? Or who are they approved by before being sent out? I am, I have one of those agreements, and I'm, I'm dumbfounded by the extent that the district is available to, to get the records of law enforcement, public safety, and such. With simply a, just a statement saying the district is responsible for compliance with RCW 1097 and 1350 and all federal laws regarding records received from the county. I don't believe that protects any county residents whose personal federally protected information is being given to these fire districts with no other statement than that, than that was there. And thirdly, and I'll make this fast because I know I'll probably be out of time. DNR, the Department of National Resources, recently is, is changing their interagency agreement between these fire districts. And in this agreement, and it's called Interagency Agreement, Department of National Resources, DNR, and then, and then you enter the fire district name. And in, in this agreement, it, it is allowing the fire districts to have employees for the fire season and volunteers, and then they will be reimbursed for all incidents through the DNR, which, to me, it seems crazy for a, for a unincorporated town or, or unincorporated place to be able to, to make their own, you know, to, to pay their own employees when they are, when, when they get tax money from, from people, from property taxes. So that's all I had, I know is a handful, thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment in the room or online? 4901.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, this is Sherri in Houston. And I would like to address a few topics that are seemingly deafeningly silent amongst our county right now. One, the first one is, what Commissioner would like to tell us about what they know about Carriageur, the solar project proposed off Knight Road, being submitted to the FSAC? It is on the agenda, Carriageur Project to FSAC. What Commissioner would like to talk to us, your people, about what this now means for Clickitack County? If this Carriageur Project is approved by FSAC, which then sets a precedent for the rest of the solar to go around Golden Dale. And this has been talked about for two years, we have tried to warn our county that if our county did not get solar regulation in place, that these foreign entities will come in and cover thousands of acres of black panels with tailing fences. with tailing fences in the beautiful area of Goldendale on farmland that's important to the future. So who, I would like somebody to speak up about this because this is quite alarming. We were warned it would happen, and we warned our county if you didn't do anything about it, this would happen. And also, I'd like to talk about the consent agenda. This consent agenda that you basically put all these items and topics on and then just go, oh, I, we approve this consent agenda, second it's done. You never discuss these topics in the public. So if the public doesn't come and look at the agenda, read into it, look at all those items, twenty-two items you have on a consent agenda right now. And I feel by not talking about these items publicly, that it's, and just approving them, when do you even discuss them? If you can't discuss things outside the public, when are you discussing these twenty-two items? When are you, are you just reading it? Like, inform us a little bit more about this consent agenda. But item eighteen is a proposed franchise agreement with Bluebird Solar Power LLC Corporation. And I publicly, I public document a request. What is this proposed franchise? What, what, what business deal are you going into? Is our county dancing around and considering entering into with this corporation owned by Avengrid? And have our, has our county looked into what happened in Maine with Avengrid? Yeah, I think you need to do that. I've warned you about this before. Who our county plays with and what agreements we make. So what is this franchise, proposed franchise that the county can't give me? One document, not one. You have nothing, but you're making a public hearing for March seventh, but you have no idea why because you have no documents on it? That's nonsense. So when our government, who has the power to imminent donate Maine land for power lines and roads, is that our government getting into a franchise agreement with a private corporation who cannot do that? And will our government abuse its power to put in wire transmissions and roads for a private entity, a foreign entity? Because their parent company is Iberola. So what's up with this franchise agreement?
Ms. Basque.
Yeah. And please talk about Carringer at the FSEC. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basque. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment?
Yeah.
Brian Walsh.
Hi, it's Brian Walsh, Avengrid Renewables, one twenty-seven oh one, Vaughn Street, Montez Vaughn Street, Portland, Oregon. Just responding to the last comment from Ms. Basque. My, my number is five zero three seven eight nine zero eight four six. I'm happy to talk to you about the franchise agreement and what we're asking for. But we need to, we need to cross over a public road with the Bluebird Project with an overhead line. And in order to get a crossing agreement over a county road, we have to enter into a franchise agreement. But it's only one area. It's an overhead line. We won't be touching the road. We'll be spanning over the public right away. So I'm happy to talk to you about it. This isn't our first franchise agreement. It's, it's the process in order to cross a county road with the utility facility. So again, five oh three seven eight nine zero eight four six is my number. And I'm happy to talk to you anytime about it. And there's a hearing on March seventh, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Online or in the room? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Okay, last chance, public comment. Star six, unmute yourself, raise your hand, turn your video on. Okay. Does my seatmate want to respond to any of the comments?
Sure. Good to hear from you again, Gabby. Daycare, I can tell you, we're having weekly conversations and meetings at the county about daycare at all levels. It keeps coming up all over the place. I sat in a meeting with the City of Goldendale and Maria Cantwell staff. And, and that was a very big subject that came up, asking for federal help. What can we do at our local levels for daycare? So it's not gone by the wayside. We are working on it. And I think Commissioner Anderson heard you and will commit to talk to Commissioner, Mr., excuse me, Commissioner Christopher about the childcare committee. And we'll have a conversation with him about continuing or making sure the county's in join with your group that you were asking about. For Tracy and Lyle, I have concerns about the public disclosure issues. I'm learning. I'm going to be reading some more RCWs and talking with our prosecutor. But I think that has become a very, very big subject for all kinds of people. For school districts, for everybody's talking about this public disclosure issues and where it's gone. It's, it is, it can be dangerous personally. You have to be so careful. And it's also overwhelming on staff and on resources. Sheri, the Night Road issue with Carringer and FSEC. I can tell you, the Commissioners might be at different places about the FSEC process, but I'm still entrenched. I'm still learning. I'm learning all about the FSEC process. And I'm, I don't want to say excited, but I'm very interested to see where this process goes. So I'm not laying it down. I'm following and, and trying to keep up.
Thank you, Commissioner Zoller. Ms. Gilbert, I think we will have a discussion with Commissioner Christopher next Tuesday, when he is here about the Child Care Committee and if he would like to continue to serve on that. Ms. McCune, the burn ban. What we are at right now is, is there has been a draft that has been written by the Emergency Management Director. And he is asking the KCIFA group, which the KCIFA group is just, in essence, the, the fire chiefs of all the different fire agencies in, in the county that get together to try to discuss either policy or direction. They aren't, as far as I know, they're just a group that comes together, and that's what they've called themselves. So I don't think they host. Okay. I don't think that they, they host public meetings just being as that it's just a, a group of fire chiefs that get together and it has no formal function. What do they do? The radio system, our, our agreements, they're the same agreements that we have between dispatch and nine-one-one and our, and our fire departments. We also have them with the cities, the EMS group. Those are just documents that we go on the consent agenda because it's just redone every year the same ass. I heard Commissioner Zoller say that she's going to look further into some of the laws. But when it says that there's going to be compliance with the RCW and federal laws, that's what we expect. That's what, we don't need to write it all out. Because if we wrote it all out and they changed the laws, then we'd have to change the document all the time. With regards to DNR and changing their interagency agreements with the fire districts, I think what you're speaking to is when our fire chiefs or our volunteers go on long-term deployments for DNR around the state, then the fire district is, you know, gets some money off of that. The employees, they become employees, and they get some money if they go for a time. And that is all that is. It's not paying volunteers for doing their regular volunteer work around locally. Ah, okay. Next, Sheri, with regards to the consent agenda. When you look at the consent agenda, and for example, you use the proposed franchise agreement for Bluebird Solar. The consent agenda is for when there is likely to not be any issues amongst the Commissioners because they've either been discussed in a different meeting. So when you look at some of the items on the agenda, that was because the Casey Peter Group got together and set those priorities. And so it goes on the consent agenda. With regards to a franchise agreement, all that agreement is doing for the consent agenda is setting a date and time for a public hearing. At that time, there will be a public hearing, and then there will be the full process. All we are required, we are required to do is to let the public know that that will be occurring, and that's why it's on the consent agenda. I believe that the reason you have not had anything on the proposed franchise agreement is because it is still in draft form and has not been released because they're still working on it. When things are in draft form, we usually do not release them because they're likely to be changed. And the worst thing for the public is to have five or six different versions of a document floating around out there. With regards to Carringer Project and going through FSEC, I actually found out just this morning that Carringer is going to go through FSEC, which is what I have always said for, you know, the last two years is my fear. And that's why I wanted people to go through the local process, and that's why I didn't want there to be a moratorium. And that's why I voted no on the moratorium so that they would go through the local process, which would give our, the planning department, our Board of Adjustment, and our local ability to have say in this matter. I can promise you that if they do go through the state FSEC process, which it seems is imminent now since we are currently in a moratorium, then I, as a Commissioner, will be involved in that process to ensure that we do everything we can to continue to protect the citizens of Clickattack County from my role as a Commissioner. And hopefully, the board will take actions together. But I will say that this is the entire reason that I voted no on the moratorium because my goal was to have these large-scale solar developers go through our processes. But I think that is on the agenda for tomorrow at one thirty. If you go on FSEC's website, you can look to and listen in on it. I don't believe it's a public hearing. I think it's internal. But I believe they are recorded. So I will be watching to find out what they say as well. And your statement, what does that now mean for Clickattack County? It is if approved by FSEC. Well, if it's a project that's approved by FSEC, then there will be a project being built. I would, I would also, it will be interesting to see if FSEC rules that our moratorium is or is not a zoning determination for the land use consistency. I'm sure everyone who is listening in has been well aware of the disagreement between Commissioner Christopher and I in this room and in the newspaper on how FSEC is going to rule on that. And with that, it is one thirty. And I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Brian Walsh for giving us more information on what that franchise agreement is. Thank you to everyone who provided public comment and asked questions. If you did not get all of your answer, questions answered, please feel free to email or call me at any time. And I would be happy to work, work with you on getting the answers you need. With that, we are going to move into a update from Economic Development Director, Natural Resources Director, Dave McClure.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Okay, maybe we start out with, I think the board has received the notice that the draft management plan for the WDFW's properties into Simcoe's out for public review. There will be a meeting in Goldendale on February twenty-three from six to seven-thirty, and that's going to occur downstairs. There will also be a meeting in Topenish that will occur before that on the twenty-second. If I didn't, in case they hadn't mentioned it, comments will be due on February twenty-ninth. Let's see, what else we got? Last week, WDFW released a status review for Western Gray Squirrel. I have not read it yet. But the announcement included, mentioned that staff is, WDFW staff is recommending relisting it from threatened species to a state listed endangered species. And that will impact us in that we have one of three populations of Western gray squirrels in the state. So they did not publish a deadline for submitting comments. So I'll be digging into that.
Can you please forward that as well to us?
Okay, sure. This week, we're starting to advertise for this twenty-twenty-three round of surfboard grants. So the process starts, Ms. Zoller.
Been a lot of years.
Both of you know that process well, I think. Yeah.
So how are you coming along at finding a replacement to start this process?
I've got an interview, and I'm hopeful on Friday. We did find someone for the economic development position, and they will start the day after President's Day. So, and they're local, so I'm really encouraged by that. So I'll, when they come on board, I'll introduce her. Let's see, the Swizzler project, oh, just one more thing on the surfboard round this year's funding. We're looking at seven hundred and eighty, you know, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand for this year funding. We're rolling over from last year, three hundred and eighty-two thousand. So we should have a total of about one point one, one point two million available. So it's a, it's a pretty big round. Most of these projects, as you're aware, are done by a relatively small suite of sponsors that have the capacity. So whether or not they have the, the capacity to, to do something that large, I don't know.
Have you talked with Director, interim Director Hunter about? I mean, that's a fair chunk of change if the county has any.
Okay.
Projects on any fish-bearing streams? I can think of Spring Creek being one and possibly that culvert on, down by west of Centerville. No, it's, it's tributary to Swale. It's that culvert that we are supposed to replace.
Okay.
On our list.
Okay. Spring Creek, I think that's sort of getting high up to do the county's portion of the funding from surfboard, I believe, because they're still trying to deal with the dam upstream that limits habitat. So, yeah, I don't know if that's in play yet or not.
Right.
So we'll check.
But I mean, if we can move forward with ours without it.
Yeah. Swizzler will have letters going out, and I'll bring them to the board. There'll be one, signatures from the Clickattack County Board of County Commissioners, as well as Benton County, and Tom Teb, Director of OCR. County, and Tom Teb, Director of OCR, Office of Columbia River, be invitations to the tribes for dialogue on the project, as well as some confirmation letters, if you will, to the landowners of the continuing interest in our ongoing work down there, make sure that's still going well, and we met with them on site, and I think we're in good shape on the landowner front there. We will need additional funding currently, I think the total grant I've got for the environmental impacts statement is a million seventy, seventy-one thousand, something like that. We have got more work to do, probably be going back for something on the order of 200, 250,000 to wrap up that environmental impact statement. Ecology's budget, I would like the board's okay to support promoting funding Ecology's Office of Columbia River, their capital budget at the level requested by the Department of Ecology, I believe that it's the governor's proposed budgets approximately 5 million short of the 45 that was asked. The Swizzler project, the funding to wrap that up, the environmental impact statement, it would be in that, some of that missing money, as would the City of Goldendale's ASR project, I'm not sure where the City of White Salmon is, but on their ASR and water supply project, but they've been getting funding from OCR on this. We've got projects, we're proposing the Simcoe Mountains for storage water, those are also dependent, this is a major source of revenue to fund water supply development in the state, so I'd like to support that. Other legislation that I'd like to the board's concurrence that I work on supporting, House Bill 1717, and the companion bills, Senate Bills 5379, therefore, it establishes a innovative economic development grant program that would be available to associate development organizations such as Clickatatt County Public Economic Development Authority. Commerce asked for 10,000, I mean 10 million to fund that in this biennium, the governor's budget was a little light, I think he was saying 7 million, so I'd like to support passage of that, so it's a competitive grant program, we'd have to come in with a project, and, yeah, so I'd like to support that.
Is that for getting things built, or is that for?
Innovative economic development program, so it's kind of open at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's not been defined, Commerce under the statute or the legislation.
Been a hearing yet?
Yes, but I didn't see it. I think it's moving, it's got a lot of sponsors, and it's, they have companion bills, so it's got a good, it's got a good chance. Couple other bills, companion bills, House Bill 1231, and Senate Bill 5229, per diemotic economic development through site readiness. Curb, or the Community Economic Revitalization Board, has a grant program for planning, its current maximum grant is $50,000, this bill would increase that ceiling to $200,000, this is for site study, site planning, engineering work, these are the kind of grants we've used, and the port of Clickatatt is used, so I'd like to support that, along with the other economic developers across the state. Another grant, another piece of legislation, again, companion bills, House Bill 1267, Senate Bill 5613 concerning rural public facilities, sales and use taxes, this is the .09 dollars, that revenue stream is currently set to expire for us in 2034, as well as most of the counties across the state, a couple of them, I think they're out there, because of when they started taking the money, they expire in 2028. I think it's worthwhile supporting now, because many counties use that to support bonding, the Clickatatt County has supported efforts to do this in the past, so I'd like to continue to lobby, if you will, on behalf of that legislation. So, one more note here, I was contacted this afternoon by Rachel Crowley, she's the new Regional Director for Senator Murray, and she contacted, evidently they've had a change recently, and she's trying to establish contacts here related to the congressionally-directed spending, and that's, as you may recall, Richard is working that avenue for getting the additional funds we need for Dallas Port, but she was also asking if we're aware of others that are going to be looking to that congressionally-directed spending mechanism to get projects done, so if you're aware of any other county departments, I might touch base with Public Works, but is anyone else going that route for funding, such as the Hood River Bridge, is that going congressionally-directed, or is that just so big it's not gonna?
Sure, congressionally-directed is usually like 3 to 5 million.
Yeah.
But the one I can think of is, I think the White Salmon Pool would be interested in submitting an application.
All right. So that's what I've got.
Okay, so you had in there an ask for support for the Ecology request for OCR?
Yeah.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Okay. House Bill 1717, Senate Bill 5379, and that's, which one was that one?
The Innovative Economic Development Program, Competitive Grant Program.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, House Bill 1231, Senate Bill 5229, the site readiness.
Yes.
And then 1267, the rural public facility sales and use tax, of course.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, there is one thing I almost forgot, the new broadband planning grant program to develop an infrastructure plan.
To go as the appendix for the state?
Yes, State Broadband Office, and 40,000 for the diversity equity kind of component plan of that. Richard and I spoke with Carrie Pivenich at McCad yesterday, they've been doing a lot in terms of coordinating regionally, what we had discussed is, if possible, McCad coordinating that and contracting directly with the state, whether, I believe it's Commerce or WSU, to get that done, rather than us playing the middle in that administrative and add costs and roadblocks and.
Or something that small, I'm totally fine with it, and it's great for Carrie.
Okay, so I'll let her know that the board is supportive in that approach, and then we'll be developing an MOU, so the county staff is involved in that process and how this works out, what are the deliverables and that sort of thing.
Are you thinking, is this going to be a Richard project, or your new person going to be picking up broadband?
Maybe the new person, yeah.
All right.
But we'll see, Richard's there, but, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, might be a good learning experience for her, yeah.
Okay?
All right.
That's it?
That's it. I'm easy there.
Blew through that. Before he leaves, any questions for our Natural Resources Director?
No.
Anything you'd like to say on, that I didn't say during public comment on Carringer? Do you have any other?
Other than now, if it goes in that route, my understanding is that the communication channel will be through FSSEC with Carringer, I think that it's unlikely that they'd be going, or would be able to talk to us on the side and try to work things out without FSSEC being in the mirror, it's going to be in a process that was designed to be solid.
Last week, I did hear from, I had a conversation with one of the solar companies, and we did talk about that, it was their understanding that Clickatatt County would have an appointee to that process.
My understanding is the statute enables that.
So we will have something there to work, when we work through it.
Isn't there one commissioner that sits on it?
It does not have to be a commissioner.
Or did that change with the last one?
On the, no, there was legislation proposed last session to have a county representative that would stay with FSSEC and become a member on all projects, I don't think that made it, and so they're staying with the route where the county, where the host county for the projects undergoing permitting would be able to put something, someone on that board to represent them during that project review.
Right.
And that's county or city, depending on which jurisdiction's happening.
Well, it'll be interesting to see what they have to say tomorrow.
Yes.
And whether the application's accepted or not.
Great.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we've got 15 minutes or so before Chief Probation Officer Courtney shows up, do we want to, oh, she's on, there, hi Courtney.
Hello, how are you?
We're doing great, it's sunny outside, and not snowing, so.
Oh, thankful, right? I apologize that I'm not there in person today, I have a kid homesick today.
Sorry, I can't see, I've got to put the shades down.
Oh, perfect.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, wonderful, I'm here today on the behalf of adult probation to request verbal authorization to move forward in applying for the Department of Ecology Community Litter Cleanup Program Grant, that is a grant that Clickatatt County has had and received for many years, it funds some of the salaries for the litter crew supervisor to take individuals out and pick up litter alongside public roadways, and that has been really successful, we want to see that continue, so that grant just opened on February 1st, and it closes on March 1st, so it's a quick turnaround, but for me to be able to move forward, I definitely need the commissioner's verbal authorization to move forward.
You've got mine.
Go ready. Perfect. Thank you, I greatly appreciate it.
Of course. Do you have any other updates you'd like to give us?
Not at this time.
All right, well, go forth and do good work.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, Lee, have you talked to Q, is Q going to be here around 2?
I believe so, I just sent him the email.
Okay. All right, do we want to move forward with the consent agenda?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, which had 22 items, but as I understand, number three was pulled for further consideration.
Okay, so I will step down and second the motion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda item with 21 items noting number three has been pulled for further consideration, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, payments.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of $229,892.48, and payroll benefit and warrants in the amount of $824,536.99, for the date ending February 13, 2023.
I will step down and second the motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of paying the bills, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Is there anything for board pending? You have anything, Commissioner Zoller?
I have no board pending.
Anything else you'd like to discuss?
I have an FSSEC question, if that's appropriate.
Absolutely.
When the solar companies go forward and submit their application to FSSEC, is there any documentation or testimony that comes from our county with that application?
The application is not our application, it's their application.
Okay, so, and so basically, we wouldn't be submitting anything at the same time, we would wait and hear from FSSEC that that application.
Right, and I looked this morning, I was going to bring it up under board pending, but it came up during public comment, I saw this morning that there is on the agenda the Carringer project that was, I believe, added under the amended agenda for FSSEC tomorrow, if you go to the FSSEC website, and then meetings, and then the agenda, there's a link for the meeting tomorrow, so if you want to zoom into it, I'll be when meetings with the legislature in Salem, so I won't be able to watch it, but I'm going to watch the video.
Okay.
And I have, I mean, all that was there was a one-page document, so it wasn't like the full application, if you look up above it, there's the full, the project in Yakima County, like it's 200 pages, and so I was trying to go through that this morning, but that was what I was going to let everyone know, is that it looks like they're going to be putting forth an application either tomorrow or very shortly, I know they'll, FSSEC usually has one meeting a month, and so they probably were trying to hustle to get it in. So, with that, any other questions?
I'll answer my question.
Okay. All right. We have nothing else for the good of the order, other than we are going to enter into executive session when the prosecuting attorney gets here, so when we come out of executive session, we will be taking no further actions, so right now, I think we're just going to sit here and sign our documents, or the prosecuting attorney is coming in now. Mr. Prosecutor, how long would you ask for executive?
Almost.
We are going to be entering into executive session in accordance with RCW 4231101I for discussion of threat and impending litigation for 15 minutes, I will again let everyone know that we will not be conducting any further business afterwards, so we are going to shut the Zoom down, and say thank you to everyone who signed on again today, we will see you all next week, and thank you, and have a lovely day.